Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Baines is absent for the whole meeting. Councilmember Brandal, Brettafeld.
Here.
Capriolio is also absent and will not be joining us for the 10:30 item. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Soria. President, Olivia.
Here, thank you. This time we'll now have the invocation by Lead Pastor Kevin Foster of Life Bridge Community Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you would please stand.
Let's pray. God, we just thank you so much for this day. I think we can gather in a forum like this to be able to discuss policy and make decisions for our city. It truly is a blessing, Lord, to be in this place. And I just pray that you would just enable us with your wisdom, enable us with your strength, Lord. We just thank you that in your word it says that you are close to those who are in trouble. And God, you help those who need wisdom. And so today, we ask you for wisdom. We ask you for strength. The decisions that we need to make today, Lord, has to be beyond just our understanding and our comprehension. And we really do need your wisdom. And so, God, we thank you, God, that if we ask for your wisdom, you will give it to us. And it's with that confidence that we start this meeting today. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Council President, could I say a word real quick about Pastor Kevin Foster here? He's a pastor in District Two. And they have a grand opening of a new church facility on September 10th. And it's at 5125 North Gates, kind of on, close to 99. And so if anybody lives in that area and is looking for a church, they're going to have a grand opening, a new facility.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's go on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, there are. Councilmember Capriolio will not be joining us today during the conference call for the 10:30 item. And under ceremonial presentations, the presentation to the student, delegates and sponsors of CVAASD has been removed from the agenda. Also, the proclamation of Brother/Sister/ Sister/Brother Day has been removed from the agenda. And then, Item 1G under the consent calendar has been removed from the agenda by staff. And finally, under scheduled hearings, the 10:30 a.m. concealed carry weapon has been removed from the agenda. Those are all the changes.
City Clerk, that item has been rescheduled for August 24th at 10:30. Okay.
Okay, and with that, the screen is clear. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. The motion was by Member Soria and the second by Member Brandal. Screen is clear. Is there any opposition?
Council President, let me make a correction. 1G was not removed from the agenda by staff. It really was a correction to the title. The title should read State Center Community College District, not State Community Center College District.
So 1G remains on the consent calendar.
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Okay, is there any opposition to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, the item passes unanimously. We move now to ceremonial presentations, and we had a number of changes to those. But we are going to move ahead with the one of International Assistance Dog Week. So we need Ed Crane and Tony Ames and Mayor Lee Brand. This is, Ed is the president of the International Association of Assistance Dog Partners. Welcome. Oh, I'm sorry, Tony is, okay.
Good morning. Right next to me, right here. I'm here to introduce a proclamation for International Assistance Dog Week. And I understand it, and I'll let you talk more, because I know you know more than I do. This is about all the different ways that dogs can assist humans. And for us politicians, as Lyndon Johnson would said, "If you want a friend, get a dog."
Amen.
So Ed, want to say a few words?
Thank you very, very much. International Assistance Dog Week kicks off this coming Sunday and will run for a week here. It's a week that we praise and honor assistance dogs around the world. Basically, we want to, number one, honor the dogs for the wonderful work that they do. Also, honor the puppy raisers and all of the trainers, organizations that raise and train these great dogs. And finally, we honor those dogs that, in the past year, have done something amazing in the way of saving somebody in a task that is unexpected, but again, proves the wonderful work that these dogs can truly do. I have, I started out here locally and formed an organization called My Assistance Dog, Inc. And three years ago, came locally to get proclamations. And I've expanded that to a point where, so far this year, we now have received a letter from the President of the United States. We've received proclamations from 40 governors to date. There's still a couple of days left. And also, letters from the commander of the United States Army, United States Marines, United States Navy and United States Air Force, recognizing the wonderful work that these dogs do. And we appreciate the fact that the city of Fresno has been there for us from the beginning. And we are truly grateful for that. So I extend my thanks. So, thank you very, very much.
Here's your proclamation. Would you like to say a few words?
I moved from New York City to Fresno in 1987 because it was tough having a guide dog in New York City. A lot of the folks would not want you to go into their restaurants and so on. And this was before the Americans with Disabilities Act. And to me, Fresno was like Disneyland. People liked dogs, they loved them, they welcomed them. Of course, as my eyes, my dog goes with me everywhere. And Fresno has still been a haven for me. It's a great place, people are dog lovers. And what we want from this proclamation is for people to understand that they're not just dogs or pets, but they do important work. When Ed mentioned saving people, when I was living in New York City, there was a huge snowstorm, and I was coming home from work. And I had to climb up this huge mound of snow and get into the road. And I was so focused on not falling that I totally forgot that I was going into the road. And my dog stopped and said to me, you know, "This is dangerous." And she was just doing her job, you know, it was nothing that she thought was, you know, very special. These dogs are wonderful, and we thank Fresno for their understanding and acceptance.
Thank you. My oldest daughter Charity used to be a trained blind dog, so.
Oh, okay.
So.
Puppy raiser?
Yeah, she was a puppy raiser. She was very good, she still is very good with animals. City Clerk, could you read your proclamation, please?
Whereas assistant dogs transform the lives of their human partners with physical, mental and/or emotional disabilities, whereas they serve as devoted partners, companions, helpers, aides, best friends and close family members. Whereas assistant dogs include guide dogs, hearing alert dogs, service dogs and seizure alert response dogs. While, whereas guide dogs assist people with vision loss, leading these individuals around physical obstacles and to destinations such as seating, crossing streets, entering or exiting doorways, elevators and stairways, et cetera. Whereas hearing alert dogs alert people with hearing loss to presence of a specific sound, such as doorbells, telephones, crying babies, sirens, another person, buzzing timers or sensors, knocks at the door as well as smoke, fire and clock alarms. Whereas service dogs assist people with disabilities walking, balance, dressing, transferring from place to place, retrieving and carrying items, opening doors and drawers, pushing buttons, pulling wheelchairs and aiding with household chores, such as putting in and removing clothes from the washer and dryer. Whereas seizure alert dog, alert, excuse me, whereas seizure alert response dogs alert or respond to medical conditions such as seizures, epilepsy, dizziness, balance issues and chronic pain. Whereas medical alert, medical response dogs alert or respond to oncoming medical conditions such as a heart attack, stroke, diabetes, epilepsy, panic attacks and anxiety attacks and post-traumatic stress disorder. Whereas International Assistance Dog Week, August 6 through 12, 2017, provides an opportunity for us to raise awareness of the selfless ways all types of assistant dogs assist individuals with mitigating their disability and related limitations. And whereas the city of Fresno joins forces with assistant dog partners, organizations and concerned citizens throughout the city of Fresno and America to raise awareness of assistance dogs and observe the International Assistance Dog Week. International Assistance Dog Week, August 6 through 12, 2017, in the city of Fresno.
Now give him a big hand. That was quite a proclamation there. Anyway, thank you, Council. Thank you. Thank you for the job you do.
Thanks, Ed, thanks, Tony.
I would have liked to have heard from the dogs. These are very smart dogs. Oh, okay. I've done it before.
All right, thanks, folks. We move now to the approval of minutes. And City Attorney, am I correct that we can just approve the minutes from the budget hearing as well as just the January 20th meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so let's take them as one. The screen is clear. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make to the minutes? Okay, in that case, does anyone wish to make a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion by Member Soria and a second from Member Brandal. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Okay, the minutes pass unanimously. Thank you, Council. It's time for Councilmember Reports and Comments. Member Brettafeld.
Yeah, first, we had, last night, we had a district meeting from 6:00 to 7:30. Talked about public safety, avoiding being a victim either in your home or a car, homelessness. It was, there were a lot of questions and concerns in the district as well as throughout the city. And so it was a very positive meeting, a terrific meeting. I wanted to thank all the city staff that were there. First, my Chief of Staff Nicole DeMire and Danny Guy, my assistant, who really put it all together. From the Police Department, Deputy Chief Pat Farmer, Lieutenant Mike Brogdon, Sergeant Michael Landon. Phenomenal information they provided to our constituents. George Anne White from Public Utilities was there. Jerry Schuber, Assistant Director, DPU. Brian Russell, Public Works. Jill Romly from Public Works. And Dan Zach from DARM. People do a great job, as we all know, from the city. And they provide such a wealth of information and, you know, took their time out from the evening, 6:00 to 7:30, so I want to thank them very much for having been there. One final thing. Our 10:30 item on the CCW issue, in terms of city employees, met with the mayor and his staff two days ago. City manager, city attorney, the mayor and other staff greatly appreciate the meeting. I think we're trying to work and see what makes the most sense. We don't have a policy in place now. The editorial board of our local paper said we have a sound policy in place. That's not true. We don't have any policy in place at this juncture. People who are either well-connected or possibly elected, they have an unwritten policy that they've exercised to utilize CCW permits that they may have. But I think we need to enact a policy. We shouldn't have two sets of rules or a double standard. So we're working on that. The city staff are going to be meeting with leadership from the unions to see what their feelings are about such a policy. I would encourage the leadership from the unions to talk to their membership because we have many people from the city who have expressed going out at 2:00 in the morning for water mains that break and being very uncomfortable in the area that they're at. Or we have people from the crime unit who are not sworn personnel, who go out to crime scenes and feel unsafe, as well as many other people in the city. And so I think we need to enact the policy. And I'm certainly open to looking at having a supervisor make a recommendation, having the chief review it, and the city manager making a determination. I think that makes some sense, and we want to certainly talk about that. But clearly, at this point, there's been a lot of misinformation about it. There is no policy in place currently, and we ought to make sure that we have some kind of policy in place. So in three weeks, City Clerk, as you said, August 24th at 10:30, we will have this item on the agenda. Hopefully, we will have worked through some of the issues and moved this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a couple of announcements. This last Tuesday, I know that throughout the city, there was a number of national night out events. But I did host one also in, I just want to highlight that I hosted one out at Inspiration Park. And I did want to give a shout out and thanks to a number of folks that made this event a success. Chief Dyer did have an opportunity to come out. We have, we had Captain Burke Farah, who was out at our R of M pretty much the entire evening, out till like 9:30, almost 10:00 p.m. And we had a number of officers come out. So a big shout out to our chief and the PD for all they do. Wanted to give special thanks to the Fresno Police Officers Association. They volunteer their time to cook hamburgers and hot dogs, which were served for all our residents there. We also had RICV, the Boys and Girls Club. We had the Parks Department, thank you for being there. They brought a bounce house, and then they showed the movie Storks for all the kids. And then we had a number of other nonprofit organizations that came out to share their resources. We had the Department of Public Utilities represented in water conservation. Thank you all for giving of your time and coming out to share some great information with the community. I also just wanted to make an announcement that our District One office is hosting a participatory budget process for the discretionary funds that each council, that my council district received in this last budget cycle. We've met with our first committee, the Budget Committee Delegation. That is the smaller steering committee. We will have three big public meetings. Just ask folks to follow us online, and we will be sending out mailers to the residents. But the next community meeting that we will be having will be August 21st at Slater Elementary School at 6:30. So just keep following us. We'd like to have community input to be creative about different neighborhood projects that we can do with this discretionary funding. Lastly, I just want to just congratulate the Boys and Girls Club summer interns. We had one in our office who was Daisy. She was with us for six weeks. PG&E is a sponsor of this summer internship program, and they've been doing this for a number of years, I believe about six years. In our office, we've hosted every year since my coming to office. And we've had a tremendous amount of great students come through our doors. This year, 100 students from Fresno County had an opportunity to have a summer part-time job, which is great and just was remarkable to see these young people graduate and also receive a computer from PG&E. And so just like, thank PG&E again for their sponsorship. And then also congratulate the young people from the city that went through the program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Soria. We now move to the consent calendar. Because there are no more Councilmember Reports and comments, let me kind of figure out what we're... What's that? Is that me? Can I get the handheld one, so I don't have to use this one? Thank you. Okay, so here's how it's going to work. So we have a number of, we have a number of yellow cards for the marijuana item, which is Item 1M on the consent calendar. So... Okay, we also have a yellow card for, from James Mendez. Mr. Mendez, are you still here? Mr. Mendez? Okay. No, Mr. Mendez was going to speak to the Member Brettafeld's motion, or item on the concealed. So, okay, that takes care of that one. So now I have one, two, I have three cards for marijuana ban. And then I have Phillies, are you here? Okay, and you want to speak on the item... Where are you? Oh, okay, and you wish to speak on, on what item? Okay. Okay. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and wait on that one. I have three cards then for the marijuana item, which is contained in the consent calendar. So what happens is, at this time, I will call forward, public comment. Hang on one sec. Do any members wish to remove any of the items from the consent calendar? The marijuana item? Okay, so the marijuana item has been pulled, but we still do the public comment with the whole consent calendar? Yeah, we do. Okay, so is that the only item we're pulling, is Item 1M, Council? Member Soria?
Yes, I'm not going to pull anything, but I did want to make some comments on, one of the items on the consent. So when do you think it's appropriate?
When we come back from public comment.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so seeing none, then we're going to go ahead and go out to the public and begin public comment. This is going to include comments on any item that's contained in the consent calendar. So the first thing we'll do is, I'll call these yellow cards. Our first speaker will be Mason Kirsten Perez. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Mason Kirsten Perez, and my address is 232 North Elm. I live in Clovis, so. All right, so Marinol, an alternative to medicinal marijuana. We want to keep the medical marijuana ban and no dispensaries. Marinol is marijuana in pill form. It's legal in all 50 states. It has been tested on thousands of participants and has been approved by the FDA since May 31st, 1985. Marinol is used to treat the side effects caused by chemotherapy, such as nausea, vomiting, anorexia and weight loss of patients suffering from AIDS. In all these instances, it has proven to be a successful treatment. According to research from the American Lung Association, smoking marijuana damages the human lung, causes chronic bronchitis and injuries to cell linings of large airways. This would explain why smoking medicinal marijuana leads to symptoms such as chronic cough, phlegm production, wheezing and acute bronchitis. In addition to this, statistics from the American Lung Association indicate smoking marijuana can harm more than just the lungs and the respiratory system. It can also affect the immune system and the body's ability to fight diseases, especially for those whose immune systems are already weakened from immunosuppressive drugs or diseases such as HIV infection. According to Workforce QA, another advantage Marinol has over smoking medicinal marijuana is the environment in which the drug is developed. Developed pharmaceutical companies that manufacture drugs in controlled environments are subject to FDA regulations throughout the production process. Marijuana grown and distributed for smoking either recreationally or medicinally can come from a variety of different environments that obviously do not fall under FDA guidelines and are therefore, at best, unpredictable and at worst, unsanitary. Lastly, from Workforce QA, unlike smoking marijuana, which most experts agree has dangerous side effects due to the hundreds of chemicals present in marijuana smoke, taking a Marinol pill prescribed by a physician eliminates many of the adverse effects associated with smoking marijuana. Incidentally, there is no FDA-approved medication that is administered by smoking.
You have another minute.
Oh, that's it, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. If you wish to stick around, I think Member Brettafeld has expressed to me that he'd like to have you come back up.
Yeah, I'm right here. Why don't you come on up there? Mason?
Wait, I want to finish public comment.
Oh, do you want to do that, and then I'll call you back?
Our next speaker is going to be Michael Green. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll also have three minutes.
Michael Green, just point of clarification. I put in a slip for oral communication. I know we have dueling marijuana bans, but I was going to talk about the adult use ban. So if we haven't reached that part. But as long as I'm up here, it's kind of a historic time to see this ordinance move forward. I think it was about three years ago was the last time we tried to do a personal cultivation ordinance. That was a four-plant ordinance, had a permitting requirement. And what we have before you today on this is basically a riff off the 2014 ban. So it basically creates a six-plant carve-out, but it leaves the $1,000 per plant fine for excess. It added a couple of new twists, such as immediate seizure of excess plants. I think you're going to have some due process concerns if you try to enforce that portion of it. So there are still some challenges with the ordinance before you, but I think they can be handled on an as-applied basis. And I think the general thrust of it should be Proposition 64 created a limited cultivation-by-right experience even here in the city of Fresno. I lovingly call it the Fresno Clause of Prop 64. And so if we take the look at it as a glass half-full, we're supportive of this moving forward, even though we do have concerns on some of the enforcement aspects of it. And, and to me, it's just nothing short of historic to see this ordinance move forward. So I thank, I thank you for your votes on this. Thank you.
Melissa Fairless, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Melissa Fairless. I live at 229 North Timmy, Clovis, California, 93612. I'm here to let you know that I do not want you to lift the medical marijuana ban, and I do not want dispensaries in Fresno. Let me give you a little bit of background of what I've done. I've worked with addicts for over 20 years. I'm a certified drug and alcohol counselor through the state of California. I worked in a program called Eleventh Hour. We were in Fresno, we were in Clovis. I worked with people that had private insurance. And so I think what I'm challenging the council to do is become more educated. Just because we put the word "medical" in front of something doesn't mean that it has a medical benefit. I work with addicts, I work with 18 years and older. And so I'm out there in the trenches, and I really encourage you guys to talk to the people that would really be affected by this. People that are in recovery, I encourage you to go to treatment centers in this Fresno area. I encourage you to talk to police officers and actual doctors. When I have clients come in and I assess them, I'm going to let you know what my experience is. And again, this is 20 years, working with addicts and alcoholics. The main drug that is being used with youth nowadays is marijuana. If we put the word "medical" in front of it, again, we, I'm going to back up a little bit and tell you, I think most of you might know, hopefully, that we have an epidemic of pills in regards to opioids. We have that situation because pharmaceutical companies were pushing that back in the 90s, and we didn't have a lot of research. And now that is one of the leading causes of deaths. It has surpassed drunk driving. So now I'm going to get back to the medical marijuana issue here. Most of the youth do not stop with using marijuana. Most of them start using medical marijuana because they, again, I'm talking about 18 and 19-year-olds, because they say that they have issues and they need that. And when they come in to me, they let me know they saw a doctor for all of five minutes who gave them that medical marijuana card. So I'm letting you know what I see. Most of the youth are starting with marijuana. If you put dispensaries in your neighborhood, it's going to be easier for them to obtain. I challenge you guys, if we were to put "medical" in front of cocaine, would we be passing that? There is no FDA regulation. You do not know what these dispensaries are actually putting in the marijuana. They're not listing the ingredients if they are. Are they even being truthful? Is there anybody regulating that? I'm letting you know that there is an addictive portion to it, which is the THC. And the way that they're making it nowadays, the THC is a lot more potent than the medical benefit to it. So I'm just challenging you guys, I have some literature for you. And I'm letting you know, in a treatment setting, the medical marijuana, kids are saying it's easier, and if it's in a home, it's going to be more accessible, just like the pill epidemic that we have. And I really don't think it's in the community's best interest. I know people love to say there's going to be a black market for it. There's always going to be a black market for everything. So I think that we need to get more educated, and I think that's your responsibility as a council. And I have paper, I have handouts for you.
Thank you. All right, we have more yellow cards. If you want to step to the... If you want to step to the lectern right now, please give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll also have three minutes.
My name is Ted Miller, PO Box 24, Carruthers, California. There's been a lot said about this ban. I am opposed to this ban. Councilwoman Soria, Councilwoman Brandow, Olivier, Baines, Chavez, Brettafeld. Except for Chavez and Capriolio, each one of you has voted the way that the voters in your districts wanted you to vote on this issue. Every single one of you, except for Luis Chavez and Paul Capriolio, represented your constituents. Five out of the seven council districts in Fresno voted in favor of Proposition 64. In the entire state, 57% of the voters voted in favor of it. This morning, a new Harvard-Harris poll, nationwide poll on the issue of marijuana, was released. This recent poll, 17% of the population favored keeping marijuana illegal. 17% of, excuse me, I misspoke, 14% of the population. 86% of the population in this nationwide poll supported either medical marijuana legalization or medical and recreational. 86% of the nationwide poll of the United States. In Fresno itself and in Fresno County, between 2010, when we, when the first proposition was voted on, and 2016, when it passed, Fresno County, cities in Fresno County moved between 9% and 17% in favor of legalizing marijuana. Councilman Chavez, you call yourself a Democrat. If you're a Democrat, you will oppose this ban. And if you support, if you represent the people in your council district who voted against this ban, who voted for the legalization of marijuana for recreational use, then you will vote against this ban. I understand that there are forces, strong forces, in this city that are opposed to it. There's people in this room who are opposed to it. All the arguments against having dispensaries, against having legal sales of marijuana, are equally valid against alcohol. And we point that out over and over again. And the reason we don't have bans on alcohol is because it leads to a black market. We've had that experience. We are trying to get rid of the black market for drugs. We're trying to make them legal and regulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address any item contained on the consent calendar? Please come forward. Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment, return to the city council. I do have an item of housekeeping. I just spoke with the city attorney, and as far as item 1M is concerned, our city charter does require that four votes be present for an ordinance to go forward. So item 1M is basically a nothing.
How do you know that? We haven't taken a vote.
Because you need four votes to pass it, and there aren't four votes here.
We don't know that. There was some confusion last week. There may, there may be, I mean, I know that you're not going to support it, but I don't know.
Okay, that's fine if you wish to vote on it, but without four votes, then it has to come back.
Yeah, then it would come back, I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm hopeful that as we talk about what this actually is, because I think there was some confusion, I might be wrong, that, and this is, you know, just putting in compliance with state law, the cultivation issue, we ought to have that vote and that discussion.
Okay. Then, then what we will do is begin by voting on the balance of the consent calendar. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar, and then we'll go ahead and take item 1M.
Okay.
At what point can I make some comments on the remainder of the consent items?
Right now.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to just make some brief remarks on item 1G. I'm very excited to actually see this item on the agenda. I know that over the course of the last year, this is an issue that we had been talking about in my office and trying to see how we help increase ridership with our bus system. And I believe that this is a very good step in attempting to not only provide public transportation for our students that go to City College and other community colleges in the area, but also Fresno State. So I'm excited to see this and happy to support.
Okay. The screen is now clear. Does anyone have, wants to make a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar? We have a motion from Member Brettafeld II by Member Soria. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Consent calendar passes unanimously. We come now to item 1M. Who removed item 1M? Member Brandow?
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. And so realistically, Councilman Brettafeld, I'm still sensing some confusion here today. And so for everybody in the crowd, and actually, this applies to people on both sides of this issue. I want to get it really clear what we're voting on today. We're really not voting on a ban of anything today. We're voting on a clarification about cultivation, okay? So I want to kind of nix the lack of clarity. So I'm going to ask our city attorney to review exactly what we're voting on today, okay?
Right. What's before the city has nothing to do with dispensaries or use of marijuana. Currently, the city bans all cultivation of marijuana, indoors, outdoors, and so forth. With Prop 64, the state said, "City, you can regulate this, but you have to allow at least for six, growing six plants in each residence." So that's what this ordinance does. It would allow, in other words, it unwinds the complete ban on cultivation, would allow growing up to six plants per residence with a regulatory mechanism for that. That's all it is.
Okay, so I hope everybody got that. I want everybody to come back when we actually talk about, you know, a ban or, and/or not a ban on medicinal marijuana, or again, when we do it on recreational in the future. But today, we're really just voting on the city of Fresno coming into compliance with one mandatory regulation from the state that says we have to allow people to grow six plants. And so I want to make sure that when the news media reports, we're not really talking about a ban on medicinal marijuana or a ban on recreational. So, and both sides, I think, are so excited about that issue, they want to talk about it. But today, we're actually talking about a much lower, smaller piece of this item, and it's got to do with people growing six plants inside their own residence. And so we're kind of coming into compliance, and, and that's right, right? Which our city attorney just said was right, so I don't need to hear that again. So I'm going to make a motion to approve, Council President. Come on up, if you.
If I may, address the particular issue of the regulation of the growing of marijuana and of private residents. The way the statute is written, Mr. Sloan and council members, is that all a police officer has to do is say, "I smelt it." And then he gets, he can take away your constitutional rights against unreasonable search and seizure. They fine you $1,000 per plant. It's draconian. It is extremely poorly written. It is written to scare you so that you don't grow marijuana. And if the police want to enforce this the way it's written, they get in the vicinity of your house, "I smelt it," break into your house, seize the marijuana, fine you $1,000 a plant.
$1,000 a plant over the six plants?
Thousand, no. $1,000 per plant.
No. No.
Yeah, that's the way it's written.
No.
Oh, okay.
No. No, we're trying to.
With no smell whatsoever, correct, Mr. Sloan? What does a policeman have to do in order to seize your plants?
Hey, Mr. Miller.
That's the way it's written.
I called you up because I want to give you a chance, but.
It's written with draconian language. It's written to prohibit the growth of marijuana way beyond Prop 64. It is, I think it's illegal, I think it's unconstitutional.
Yeah.
You took no, there was nobody involved in actually growing marijuana to chime in on this.
All right.
Okay? So this is, this law is bad. It's badly written.
Okay.
Okay? That's the message.
All right.
You can, you can regulate it reasonably. The regulations in this law are unreasonable.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I called Mr. Miller up because I, you know, I wanted to give him a chance, but the city of Fresno is not sending police around doing some kind of a sniff test and, and breaking into people's homes, okay? It's not happening. And so for the rest of you, I want you to know that it's about six plants per person inside their own home. That's what we're voting on today, okay? So, and I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, so, again, I appreciate the clarification because this is what we voted on last week. We didn't vote on banning any dispensaries. I want to be clear that in this ordinance, it says, "In accordance with what is expressly permitted under state law, this prohibition will not be enforced for up to six marijuana plants grown with a single privately, within a single privately legal occupied residence within a lock space using no more than 1,200 watts of lighting, lighting with no detectable odor from outside that residence and not visible by normal unaided vision from a public place of adjacent residence." So the Prop 64 says you can have six plants, up to six plants. Now, if you grow more than six plants, we have in here that you can, we can administer a citation of $1,000 per plant, per day, that the plant remains unabated past the deadline. So it says very clearly, we are getting in line with Prop 64, which says six plants, and if you grow more than six, there's a fine of $1,000 per plant. Now, can city manager, and city manager or city attorney address why we're putting in no more than 1,200 watts of lighting?
From the administration and I believe from the planning department, that was determined how much would be safe based upon the electrical load that's allowed for homes and that kind of thing.
Okay, so if we're voting against this, in some sense, we're potentially creating a fire hazard by allowing people to use more than 1,200 watts of lighting. I mean, it's a reasonable thing to request 1,200 watts of lighting. And there have been fires created, of course, by people who are very into growing marijuana, and the homes have gone up. Has that been the case, city attorney, city manager? Do you know? Doug, have there been incidents where this wattage has exceeded 1,200 watts and there's been a fire?
I don't personally know. We would rely upon the department to supply that information.
Okay. There's nobody here, I guess, to address that? Okay, nobody here from fire or anything. But there's a reason why we're choosing the 1,200 watts. It's obviously a safety issue. We're in compliance with Prop 64, that's what this is allowing. And it's putting in some limitations in terms of the wattage so we don't create fires when people are growing marijuana. Seems very reasonable. We're putting in an ordinance to say, "If you grow more than six, we're going to fine you." So we're in, within compliance within state law. So I think if you're voting against this, you're saying you're not concerned about people growing 60 plants in your home. So I think this is a very reasonable thing to support. The county has this in place. We'd be in compliance with the county, and we're certainly in compliance with state law. That's what this is about. It's not about dispensaries, and it wasn't about that when we voted on it last time.
This does not comply with Prop 64. You're wrong. I'll address it. But I'm sorry, sir, it doesn't comply.
Can I, I'm sorry, I wanted to bring up Mason. Mason, would you come on back, please? So I just was curious, it's not related to this issue, but you were talking about this Marinol. We were aware of some other drug that was, it wasn't Marinol, that was being prescribed in pharmacies for people. Where did you find out about this Marinol?
I've been researching like, just like alternatives for marijuana, and I have happened to find Marinol. It's legal throughout all 50 US states, and it's been in law since 1985. Like, it's been approved by the FDA, and it's just, just been a better alternative than marijuana.
Okay. And what got you interested in researching this? You in high school or college?
I'm declining college, high school.
You're in high school?
High school.
Okay. What got you interested in this kind of issue?
I just, I just heard about the state pass, and I just wanted to read more into it. And I was like, oh, this is kind of interesting, so I just started reading more into it. And I was looking at alternatives and stuff besides medicinal marijuana, like smoking it and other things like that.
Okay, well, thank you. I greatly appreciate you coming today, and you made some great arguments in terms of people using medicinal, not just smoking marijuana, which, and I think there are some fantastic arguments with that. And I wish we saw more people like yourself coming up here and speaking. So I want to congratulate you for that, and thank you for it.
Sir.
Okay.
Member Brettafeld, are you finished?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of, draw attention to a couple of things before we vote on this item. I will be opposed to it, and I'm asking that my, my council colleague, esteemed council colleague, Member Soria, join me in opposition to this item because it is onerous. It's, it's onerous, it's a bad piece of legislation, it's not good for public policy in the city of Fresno. It's definitely not well-thought-out. It's a knee-jerk item. The fact that it's not thought-out is, the fact that it's not well-thought-out is going to, can also hurt the bottom line in the city of Fresno. While cities all around us, up and down the state of California and in other states, take critical and well-thought-out looks at their marijuana policy, they are able to actually turn that into dollars in the form of tax revenue that these municipalities can use to pave roads, to trim trees, to keep pools open during the summertime. And that's what our surrounding cities are doing, but that's not what we're doing. So I'll be opposed to this because it's onerous, and I think that what we need to do, it's, if Member Soria joins me today, it's going to die again. So obviously, this is a piece of legislation. I mean, granted, there have been attendance issues, but it's, it doesn't just pass six to one, or five to two, or seven to zero and go through. This is an item that has problems. It's, it's an item that a lot of people have in the community, have a lot of concerns about. Usually, on the council, when we see items that the people are behind and are good pieces of public policy, they sail right through because it's the right thing to do. But this is an item, whether we're talking about cultivation or whether we're talking about a ban, it has its problems. And so what you're witnessing through the Fresno Bee and through Twitter and through the public discussion that's going on, is you're witnessing a flawed piece of legislation slowly die. And we'll see if, when the other two members return, if this thing goes through. It may, it may barely go through, it may not, but it's not going to go through today. It's, it's interesting to hear people who are generally for the prohibition of marijuana claim that we need to vote yes on this today because it's, it's permissive, and it's, it's a good thing, and people get to grow. I think that I do agree with Mr. Miller when, when he says that this ordinance calls for no odor. And if there is an odor, it allows, it creates an exigent circumstance for the police to raid that property. So I do agree with Mr. Miller and disagree with a couple of my colleagues that say that, that it's not onerous because it doesn't allow police to do a raid. It actually does. So I do agree with you on that. So, so what do I think should happen? I think that the city needs to go ahead and wait. We do have the luxury of having a number of months. I think the city should engage consultants, the same consultants who have advised other cities and counties. You may say, "Well, Clint, what do you want?" I think that when we're taking a critical look, we need to look at what the best practices of other municipalities and counties are doing. For example, Monterey County does not allow outdoor grows. They only allow indoor grows. But they also, in places where greenhouses have been set up, tax $15 a square foot for the marijuana grow. $15 a square foot. That's a huge amount of taxes. The people that I've discussed this with, and according to my research, it's not an onerous tax. But these are some of the benefits that other municipalities are able to capture when you're talking about the cultivation of marijuana. So while some folks up here say, "Oh, well, six plants, that's a progressive and a permissive and a wonderful thing to do," it's not. It just brings the city of Fresno in line with the, with the state requirements. But what we could do, and Prop 64 allows municipalities to have local control, exercise that control in terms of coming up with some kind of way that we can take the cultivation of marijuana away from the criminal element, away from the black market, away from the gangs who grow in the Sierras. market, away from the gangs who grow in the Sierras, and regulate it, and, and provide a safe, regulated marijuana product, while at the same time capturing tax revenue, that everybody knows that this city is broke. If you've been sitting out there in the gallery for the budget, uh, that we just went through, we're still not out of the woods, and we're still struggle. And so I think that, um, I think that it would be a, a responsible and prudent thing to look at, uh, the, the benefits that, that this municipality could get from the, um, regulated cultivation of marijuana, and not to just pass this and say, "Oh, look how progressive we are, and look at how, you know, incremental and baby steps, and look how permissive we are." This is not progressive, and it's not permissive. It does absolutely nothing, uh, and, and it, it is a ban. And it's a ban, uh, that is closed-minded. It is a ban that, that doesn't take into account, um, ways, uh, that this city could, could really lead the way, uh, and so I'll be voting no, and I'm hoping that my colleague, Esmeralda Soria, will vote no on this, uh, as well. Um, Member Bradifeld, and then Member Chavez?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, let people know that, uh, got information from our city manager and other staff, that 1,200 watts on our standard 15 amp breaker could overload a circuit and result in a fire. So we are placing a restriction, no more than 1,200 watts of lighting, in order to avoid the overloading of a circuit and resulting in a fire. I don't know how you can vote against that, uh, unless you're welcoming fires. Uh, it's just an easy, standard thing to support. And we can laugh and make light of it, but the fact is, there have been fires because people, obviously when they're growing marijuana, don't follow the rules and create fires. And it's laughable until the house goes up, or someone else's house goes up, or someone loses a life. Not complicated.
Member Bradifeld, I, I, I had to laugh because you said that anybody who votes against this welcomes fires. I'm gonna vote against this, and I condemn fires. I don't welcome fires. That's not a, uh, that's not a good jump.
It's a good jump if we're putting a limit on people using wattage, and you're not supporting what we're trying to do. So you're saying, "It doesn't matter what people are using in terms of their house, and it doesn't matter how many plants they grow, and it doesn't matter if there's a limit on the six? You're for anything goes."
No, I'm, I'm not for anything goes. Member Chavez?
Just a point of clarification from the city attorney. So is it fair to say that, no matter what the city of Fresno does, what ordinance we try to implement, anybody in the city of Fresno, per Prop 64, can grow six plants of marijuana?
Well, I'll clarify. Uh, right now, the city has an ordinance that bans all cultivation. Uh, state law with Prop 64 said, "Cities, you have to allow for at least six, growing six plants per residence, uh, indoors." And so, uh, without passing this ordinance today, uh, if you mesh the two, we would have a complete ban, but it would be unenforceable as to six plants per residence. But that unenforceability would be without any regulations on how you grow those six.
State law supersedes local law. That's basically the bottom line.
Yes.
And they're allowed to grow six plants, no matter what.
That's correct.
So I guess the question is, and I'm really interested in the conversation, Councilman Olivier, what, what is an acceptable amount of plants in one single residential home? I'm curious about that. If it's not six, what, what would it be?
No, and I thank you for your interest, and I thank you for your question. I don't know. I'm not an expert on marijuana policy, but there are people in the state of California who are. And so what I'm saying is that in, that this is a ban. What we're voting on today is a ban, and I do believe it to be onerous, and I think that what this municipality should do is engage, uh, top people and consultants within this industry to find that sweet spot and to help us craft. I mean, we have a very competent and professional, uh, city staff. We have a competent and professional city attorney. But I think that to entrust something as serious, and entrust an issue and a package of, of, uh, regulations as serious as this, with such far-reaching ramifications, to just do this locally, I think is myopic. I think that what we should do is give our professional city staff and city attorney the tools that they need to, to come up with a more, uh, a, a, a better policy than just a knee-jerk ban. And so what I'm saying is, is vote no today, send this thing where it needs to go, and then we have another, uh, we have a period of time where we can engage consultants to come up with a better policy that will benefit this city. That's all I'm asking.
What if consultants come back and say that it is six? Would you support something like that?
Um, I have my own philosophical reasons for, for, you know, what, why not seven? Like, why is it, why is it evil to have seven, and it's somehow good and virtuous to have six? So I, I don't know, um, what my vote would be when the consultants come back with a, uh, with a response, but, um, I can tell you, I think that to do this without the input of top people, I, I think is probably, uh, a little borderline irresponsible.
Well, and the reason that I mentioned that I'm so focused on the amounts is, you know, the first two years that I was a school board member, I worked with our local PD, and we shut about six of these marijuana growth homes that were right across schools, that were selling to our kids. That's a big problem. I understand the recreational piece, I know there's folks that, that need it, but that was a big, big concern, and that was one of the motivations for the way I voted previously. I am open to a conversation about this, and, and you and I are working on another piece that's related to this, but this conversation that, that we're having right now, to me, I think for this, we're just codifying what the state of California is essentially outlined for municipalities. We have flexibility in that, but I don't know what the correct amount of, of plants would be acceptable, because if you ask a neighbor, maybe for them, it's less than six, too.
Well, you know what? If, this is a good conversation. I think that, uh, I like where you're headed, and I like what you're thinking. Um, I can tell you about my history on this council. Um, I had a tremendous, tremendous amount of heartburn because I voted against allowing, um, uh, marijuana to grow. A number of years ago, um, I had a, a, a constituent who's in her seventies or eighties and lived on Iowa down by your district, and she had people growing marijuana, a massive grow, outside, uh, next door. And so, um, I went out to visit her, and this woman was suffering from asthma, and she had bronchitis, and when the marijuana was harvested, it was letting out dust and, and pollen, whatever, uh, and making this woman very sick. So the item came forward, and I don't remember who brought it, I think it perhaps may have been city staff, but the item came forward, and, uh, I thought, you know, people, I guess if they wanna grow, they can grow inside, but when, you know, it's like maybe a homeowners' association, somebody growing outside like that creates a nuisance, and it's making people sick. This lady's wasn't the only complaint that I received. And so I voted to prohibit the outdoor growing of marijuana in the city, within city limits. Then it came back a few weeks later, a few months later, shh, um, allow people to grow indoors. And I, I, I voted to support that because I believe that, you know, whatever you wanna do in your own home, you can, you can do in your own home. And so, um, I was at a, a block party once at, uh, um, boy, I'm trying to think. Oh, this was on the, this was on the, the Clay and Bond block party we do, bringing broken neighborhoods back to life. And for two years, there was a major pot grow going on across the street from the block party, where the police come and do face painting, and a dunk tank, and these kinds of things. And so, um, um, we can ban, and we can prohibit, and we can fight, and we can rant and rave and, and rail against, uh, you know, the loco weed. But the reality is, is that we're actually doing, um, block parties, the police department's doing block parties across the street from people who have six-foot fences in their front yard, and green plants topping it. So it makes people feel good to ban, and it makes people feel good to prohibit, but the reality is, is it's completely unenforceable. So that's why I'm suggesting that as a city, uh, we come up with something better. Um, and, and I'm, I'm just responding to you, but I, I had a, a thought. Doug, just for qua, uh, clarification, what we're voting on today, does this allow renters? Speak to the issue of renters and six plants.
Well, it, it doesn't address whether you're renting or owning. It's per residence. Now, as to whether or not a renter could grow, that would be between the renter and the landlord, whether it's allowed pursuant to the lease. Typically leases say, "You must obey all laws." So it's possible that a renter would be in violation of a lease because it's still in violation of federal law to grow marijuana. So, but that's between the landlord and the tenant.
There's just, these, these are the kinds of questions that I have, that I think we should engage consultants. Maybe the consultants come back, and they're drug warriors, and they say, "We ban it all, and we do this and that." But I think that it's important that we take a more critical look at the issue.
Uh, I, no, I agree, and I'm looking forward to that conversation, and, you know, the way I see it, it's a tough issue, right? We have the state that outlines their criteria. Keep in mind, like, our city attorney said, it's still 100% illegal under the federal law. So, so, so we'll have that conversation, I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to. But I think within that context, we should have a conversation about what is an allowable amount of marijuana plants per residential home? I think that's gonna be a part of the discussion. Thank you.
Member Bradifeld and Member Soria?
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, this issue you mentioned about, you know, having these people decide this, the state has decided. It's already decided. That's the law. They're allowed to have up to six plants. We could come back and say, "Two plants," but the state law is six. It's been decided. It's just an issue, there, there's no city staff that we're gonna give it, uh, an exercise of, "Go find out how many plants there's supposed to be." It's done. It's decided. We're either gonna be in compliance with our municipal code, or we're not. And we're either gonna put some restriction above 1,000 plants, or we're not. And we're either gonna put restrictions on lighting, or we're not. But number of plants, that's decided, and it's the state that's decided it. Uh, uh, City Attorney, is that accurate, or is that not?
The state has decided that six is the minimum number of plants. Uh, there is no upper limit under state law.
You're saying that according to, anybody can grow, unless we put a limit, they can grow 60 plants in their home?
Yes. The state has said, "Cities, you can regulate this, but you have to allow up to six plants."
Allow up to six plants, but they can grow more than that?
Uh, without any city ordinance, one way or the other, there's no limit on how many can be grown.
City... Can I ask him a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
We, we just had this conversation. So, to be clear, in terms of the existing ordinance that we have, we have a no cultivation ban currently as our city, in our city code.
That's correct. You can't grow any right now under current ordinance.
So, even though, um, the, now Prop 64 has allowed six plants minimum, right? Which now makes our city code unenforceable up to this, those six plants. So people can grow up to six plants in their homes today.
That's correct.
Because we can enforce it. However, our city code also says that you can't grow. So therefore, beyond six plants, under our current city code, if anyone cultivates beyond that, they will be charged a thousand-dollar minimum fine. So there's already a mechanism in place, existing within our code. So, while we're saying, you know, we're gonna put our, our city code in compliance with state law, state law trumps city code, so therefore...
To the extent, to the extent they're inconsistent, yes.
Yes. In, in terms of the inconsistent. So, you know, I've been listening to the conversation right now, and I, I'm inclined, you know, I, I do support regulation, because I think that we need to be responsible, but I think that it does merit further conversation. I think that there's an opportunity for us, you know, just as we're having this discussion, to really determine, you know, where the city of Fresno will go, um, in terms of our regulatory mechanism, if there are some opportunities. So I am willing to take a, a little bit more time to look at this and see, because I know that existing, if we don't do anything, people are gonna be allowed to grow their six plants per state law, and if they have anything beyond that, we do have a mechanism to go back and enforce anything beyond that. And so I'm comfortable with that at this current moment. I think that there is an opportunity for us to come back and continue having a conversation, and that's what policy bodies do, that we're gonna have a conversation to come up with the best piece of policy that will help people that need it, and that maybe we can, you know, make something to help also the city of Fresno. I know that there's other local jurisdictions looking at this issue, and I'd like to see what they're coming up with so that, you know, there's some consistency as well. And so I, I'm okay with, uh, allowing for more, more time, and so at this point, I won't support the, the existing, because I think that there's something already in place that, um, regulates it, per state law and per our code. And so I would allow for more time for this discussion.
Member Brando?
So Councilmember Soria, you brought up a, a new part of the, well, actually, Councilman Olivier brought up some of it, but, so, who do you want to go out and improve upon the information that we have now? When you say city staff, you want, uh...
Well, I think city staff, us and professional, like the council.
Like, you mean us, us seven of us?
Yeah, the council. I think that it merits a continuous conversation.
And so...
There's, there's gonna be some of you that you're just completely...
When, when, here's, so then, this is my request to my two colleagues. When we come back and visit this thing, two weeks, or a month, or whatever, would you please both be able to tell us how many plants that you think are allowable in Fresno residential homes? Because, really, nobody wants to provide solutions. We have a solution today that's in line with the state of California. It allows everybody that wants to smoke marijuana, six plants minimum, okay? And some of my colleagues don't, aren't comfortable with that, but they don't wanna tell us of, obviously, and of course, they don't wanna tell us, how many plants do they feel Fresno residents should be allowed to grow? So I'm gonna ask both you guys, you wanna go back out and spend more time on this? Next time, just at least give me a number.
Member Brando?
Yeah.
I'm gonna turn that question back on you. How many plants do you think is moral and right?
Zero. That's what I think, I made that clear.
Then why are you, then why are you voting to allow people to commit evil and have six plants in their home? If you philosophically and spiritually believe that zero plants is the right number, why are you voting to legislate six against your own personal beliefs?
Because I am not given, I am not in charge of this conversation. If I was in charge of this conversation, it'd be a lot different. But I'm not in charge of it. I have to deal with what, this is the problem, I have to deal with what's presented to me, right? The state of California has said that six plants are allowable, right? I'm, as Councilmember Chavez show, talked about when he made his comments, we're not gonna get around that. Where there's, there's not gonna be some study done by some person in the city of Fresno that's gonna be able to get around that, okay? So now, my only option becomes, six plants, cap, or, who knows? Have you guys think that, um...
Steve, can I just, can I just add, Steve, to your comments?
Mm-hmm.
With our existing city code, and because of Prop 64, the status quo is what we are, what we have here in place. I think what we're asking is, I think that if, if there's additional time before we codify it, let's go back and figure out that. But right now, people can legally grow six plants, and we can enforce beyond the six plants because we have a no cultivation ban, which is a thousand-dollar fine per more plant. So, e-essentially, that's in place right now.
Okay.
And so all we're saying is, give us a little bit more time to come back, um, before we completely codify it, to figure out if there is some flexibility where we can add to it. That's all.
And, and I, and I, and I find with that, here's the problem. We're gonna face this again in two weeks, when we're gonna have seven council members up here instead of five, and I think you're still gonna vote no in two weeks, but what I want in two weeks is you to go do some research and tell us how many plants you feel comfortable with inside city of Fresno residences. That's all I'm gonna ask. My guess is, my prediction is, I'm not gonna hear that number from either one of my colleagues. So, um, I, I think we're just postponing the...
And, and I don't know if two weeks will be enough, but, um, I think that there is an interest, and a genuine interest by a number of folks up here to try to resolve this issue. This issue is very complex. There are so many different facets to this issue. There's a medic, medicinal component, there's a recreational, and there's a lot of stuff happening surrounding our local jurisdiction as well, that will impact what we're doing. And so I think that what we wanna do is look at it comprehensively, so that we do make the best policy decision, 'cause there is right now tools and mechanisms in place to enforce beyond the six plants. That's why I feel comfortable today saying, "Let's continue to, having this conversation," because there is a limit. There is a limit, and we've provided that, given the ban that we have codified previously.
And then Member Brando, how about seven?
Well, how about 107?
How about eight?
Yeah, of, yeah, a density, but, similar to the density bonus. Okay, right, yeah. How about eight, nine, 10, 12? Who's gonna, who's gonna call the shot on that? Right? Right? So I, so, you're on the right path, please give me a solid number when we face this in two weeks, what you feel comfortable with.
And will you do the same? Will you come up and tell...
Yeah, I can give you my number now, but, but I, I want, you know, you guys are saying that we don't have a good solution, but we need solutions, right?
And, and I have...
But you guys are going, what you're going to do is you're going to throw this on to the city attorney, city, city manager, spend a bunch of time, and a marijuana consultant probably, and you said there's experts in the state of California, I haven't, I haven't discovered them yet, but, but, who are the experts in California? We need some names.
I...
You don't know them. I know them.
Are you up to one more public comment?
No. It's up to the council president.
No.
Can I go ahead and give my time, so that she could come up, please?
All right, the, the first thing that, okay, uh, Member Soria, um, and Member Brando, everyone on the, on the council dais, I want to, the first thing I want to do is to, um, prevent the meeting from, um, becoming like it was, um, and no offense to present company in the 1990s. So, we want to have a, a very good, um, uh, meeting, and so the first thing we'll do is we'll let Member Brando finish with his complaint, uh, comments, sorry, that was a slip. And then Member Bretafeld, and then Member Soria, if you would kindly punch up, then what we'll do is call, um, you can call anyone you want up, and same as you. So we'll, we'll let you conclude. Member Bretafeld, your turn next, and then Member Soria.
So, council president, I, I feel very comfortable with the conversation, I don't think, I don't think anything's been said offensive, and you, you haven't offended me, I hope I haven't offended you, but, but, you know, we've got a, you know, I think this is really, in my opinion, what we're seeing today is mostly a stall tactic, okay? And it's, it's happening because we don't have a full council here. But, I'm going to, if, if my two colleagues are realistically concerned, they're not happy with the number six plants, a number of six plants, then they need to provide us with what number they feel we should be voting on. And so, I'll let you guys determine that, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, and then we're asking for your vote to retain the top consultants in the state of California.
Uh, no.
To, to determine what the best public policy should be for our city.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to spend...
So I just have to conjure up a number, but you, you, in terms of public policy, this is not a stall tactic. This is an issue that I feel very passionate...
No, I, I know that.
I'm very passionate about this issue. I'm very passionate that this body should create good public policy, uh, and, and move our city forward in a smart way, instead of just knee-jerk bans, because we're afraid of pot. And so, I'm not trying to stall, I absolutely want this thing to die today, I think that would be good for, for, for the city. Uh, but in terms of, uh, moving forward, I don't think that it's unreasonable to, to take a more progressive, uh, look at, um, at marijuana policy in the city.
It's almost, it's very difficult for me to take progressive looks. But if you want to, that's okay.
So, okay, and with that, are you, are you...
I'm done.
Okay, Member Bretafeld.
Yeah, listen, uh, Councilmember Brando, I think you've, uh, hit it right on the head. Uh, our two colleagues are not willing to support six plants, they want to look at a number, I don't know what that number is. Uh, I'm with you, zero's my number, Brando's number is zero. Because that's the state law. I don't like the state law, but it is the state law. And so I want to bring our municipal code in line with state law, and put a restriction on being able to grow more than six plants. You're not comfortable with that, it is incumbent upon you, and Councilmember Soria, and anyone else, to determine what that number is, because you're saying today, you're not comfortable with this, and you think there might be a different number. Now, I'm also not going to support a marijuana consultant statewide, local-wide, or anything else. This is something you need to decide, because you've said, this is, I don't know that this is a fair number. It could be 600.
Will you give me the help that I need to determine how...
You can go and research it all you want, you have a staff, research it. Research it, you've got plenty of people here who, who'll talk to you. Maybe the number for you is 600, maybe it's 6,000. For me, it's zero. So, it's up to you. It's up to you to bring it forward. Now, I, I think we need a full council, I would say we bring this back in three weeks, I won't be here in two. We bring it back in three weeks when we have a full council. I think we should just delay this for three weeks, let's not take a vote. Uh, I make a motion that we just, uh, delay this until three weeks, let's bring it back on the 24th, and let's address it. You've got plenty of time to decide, and research, and talk to other people, and let's, let's see where the council is.
Um, okay, um, Member, Member Bretafeld and, and Member Brando, I don't use my time or my staff time, uh, I, I use my time and my staff time, uh, the way that I, I deem fit. I don't use my time or my staff time, uh, to research things for other members of the city council, uh, at, at their whim. Um, so I'm not going to instruct my staff to throw a dart at a dartboard and pick the best, um, um, number, the optimal, uh, number of marijuana plants that, that people should be able to grow in, in the city of Fresno. Um, and it's, I think it's petty, and I think it's childish to taunt Member Soria and I in this way. Uh, we are advocating for good public policy, we are advocating for creativity, we are advocating for solutions, and we are advocating for the retention of, of, um, of professionals who know this industry. And what we're seeing here, from the drug banners and the drug warriors on this council, is fear, because they're squirming, now they're pulling their items, because they know that Member Chavez is, is asking the right questions, he's taking a look at this item, we don't know where Member Baines and Capriolio are, this could be a council going the other way. And so what we're seeing, just pick a number, Clint, pick a number. That is, uh, what, what you're witnessing is the, the sponsors and the supporters of this item, uh, quite frankly, uh, experiencing great fear that they may be losing. And you know what? You, you may prevail today, uh, you may prevail, uh, in 2017, but by 2027, all this and this, this silly debate will be wiped away, because future councils are going to take that look, and they are going to make those changes, uh, in the interest of, uh, what's best for public policy in, in the city of Fresno.
Well, I, I appreciate your sentiments, I know you're very passionate about it, and I respect it. And I don't know that you can prognosticate 10 years from now, if you can, that's quite a talent, uh, we don't know what's going to be 10 years from now. Uh, but I will tell you, we're dealing with 2017, and, um, that nobody's trying to delay anything, I'm trying to get something resolved. You're not happy with today, uh, the, the number, and I'm just saying...
Let, let's take a vote, then.
Well, I've made a motion to continue it, when we can have a full council, and finally address this, there's a second.
All right. Member Soria, you've been punched up so patiently.
Yes, thank you, council president. All I just wanted to say, because I feel like, you know, with all due respect, Councilmember Bretafeld, you continue to give misinformation. The fact of the matter is that if we don't do anything today, state law allows six plants. We still have, no, we still have codified in place a cultivation ban. Therefore, beyond six plants, it's enforceable to go after someone and fine them a thousand dollars. So I just wanted to make sure that the public knows, that, yes, they can, right now, legally grow six plants, and that per our existing ban, it is enforceable to go after people and fine them a thousand dollars. And so, without taking action today, we're, we are saying, we're okay, some of us are saying, we're okay, but we're going to want to revisit the issue and continue to have a public discussion, to ensure that moving forward, we create the best policy. And so that's what I'm supporting today. And I don't want people to go out of here without information, saying, well, they're not, uh, they don't have a number, and people can grow beyond whatever they want. That is not the case, because existing law, both state allows six, and our, our code doesn't allow, so therefore, people could be charged a thousand dollar fine beyond six plants. Um, I did want to give time, is that Susan? Yeah, just Susan, if you want to come on up and make your remarks.
Hi, my name is Susan Juve, and I live at 1453 North Wilson. I was hesitant to speak today, because eight days after the last city council, I had a visit from zone enforcement. You know, um, this law is flawed, I would like to see us have six plants and, and that be okay, and it sounds like we're covered for now, but in the meantime, Mr. Olivier and Ms. Soria are correct. This needs to be investigated, it needs to be written well, and there needs to be some accommodations for, uh, where, if these people are going to make false allegations against us and have zone enforcement come out, I don't think it should be anonymous, I think there should be penalties for people who file those complaints against us, I think that needs to be considered also. And I think that there is another discussion that you should have about six immature and six mature. Um, the immature needs to exist, because when we harvest, it takes a long time to, to grow another plant. So if we have six immature plants, they're not harmful to anyone, they can't be harvested and, and used, they're just babies, they don't have buds on them. Then you have your six mature plants, and, um, that would keep patients from having to depend on black market or other sources for our medicine. And we can assure that there's no pesticide used, or funky chemicals put in them. So, there's a little bit of stuff that needs to be talked about, and, um, some of our rights need to be protected. I don't, I was very upset when they came to my house. I am a law-abiding citizen, of course, I gave them access to my garage so that they could look, but, um, I was very offended by that. I, I, you know, Mr. Bretafeld made the comment that people who grow marijuana don't follow the laws. I am a law-abiding citizen, sir. Yes, you did, one of your comments was, and, um, I will always follow the law. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan, for your comments, and I think that's a great example of how, um, we need to continue to have a discussion to ensure that we craft the best, um, public policy, um, with this issue.
Okay, uh, the, the screen is clear, now, no one, there's so much has been said, that my memory is kind of, um, fading. So there was no motion, there was no motion made to approve, right?
There was a motion, the motion pending is to continue the item, to the 24th.
Okay, the screen is clear, uh, let's go ahead and...
Was there a second to that motion?
Yeah, Luis Chavez was the second. Okay, the screen is clear, is there any opposition? Okay, item is continued. Thank you, everyone.
Bravo. Good job, all of you.
Okay, so now we're moving away from the consent calendar to schedule, uh, council hearings. Uh, we can't call the 10 o'clock item yet, because it's 9:59. Oh, there it goes, 10 o'clock, let's call the 10 o'clock item, consider hearing to consider annexation application. Uh, this is development and resource management.
Yes, uh, good morning, council president, council members, I'm Israel Trejo with the Development Resource Management Department. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the subject project, uh, we have no information to add, uh, to the staff report, um, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, um, let's go out to the public, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item? Please step forward. Okay, um, seeing none, we'll return it to the council. Uh, Member Brando? Did you punch up for this item?
Yeah, I did, but...
I already did.
No members of the public? No. No. Hello? Yeah. Sorry about that. Uh, Tim Butler, um, owner, Butler Construction and Renovation.
You can raise that.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Uh, Tim Butler, Butler Construction and Renovation, uh, president, CEO. Uh, I'd just like to address you personally, when we get started, um, I'm a small business, uh, in Fresno, and, uh, we only have six employees coming into the area. Uh, this area is very unique for the type of building that we do, and that's why we bought the property. Um, we would very much like to keep it, uh, in the natural state that it's in right now. It will not only bring the value of the properties that we're going to be working on down, but it's going to bring, uh, the character and change the character of the overall area. So, we're adding four houses, we have, uh, volunteered to help do some extra work around the area, because we, it will help our project as well. We're looking at fixing, uh, volunteering to fix the road around the school, um, and the area, uh, could use some help. Um, there's a couple of factors in there, as far as, uh, city, county lines and borders that have been neglected, that we would like to come in and really help the area with the project, so, um, I know we have talked with, uh, Councilman Brando in the area, um, got him out to look at the area, actually see what's going on, I think it's much easier to, to come out and see what, uh, what would be best for the area. I've also talked to the neighbors, um, both across the street, we've talked with the school, um, and, uh, and the neighbors in, directly adjacent to the property, and everyone lives there because of its natural state. The large trees, um, they don't want to live in the middle of the city. So, while I understand that there are some advantages to putting sidewalks and bus stops and things in, um, it, this isn't the area to do it, so, just, uh, that's my two cents on it. Thank you.
Good morning, I don't have to adjust it, Norman Allender, uh, 163 North Park Drive from Madera, California. Uh, just wanted to echo what Mr. Butler has said here, and, uh, we have, uh, corresponded with the staff in writing about the unique character of what we have in this neighborhood. This is not your typical suburban neighborhood, as you said, that's why this project or property was chosen, because of its natural beauty. Uh, you do have in the area already, on Class 1 Trail on the west side of Van Ness, it already exists just across the street, uh, your general plan policies absolutely support, uh, scenic corridors, policy MT 3A and MT 3B specifically, call for preservation and unique corridors in, in established areas. Title 13, or, of your chapter of your code, allows for tree preservations and deviations for this. This is the prime example where, um, where the standard that is put in place is incongruent with, this is a built-out neighborhood, and this is a unique situation. So, we bring this to your attention, we thank you for your consideration today. Thank you. And I do believe there are some neighbors here, uh, the direct neighbor is here as well. Thank you.
I, I called the item and closed public comment, but if you want to call people up, you're welcome.
Anybody else like to address this issue, sir? Come on up.
Good morning, my name's Mike Cornell, I own the property directly adjacent to the development, uh, my address is 2287 West Bullard. And I have a couple of concerns with what, uh, the city is proposing. Number one, I have no direct involvement with that project, uh, other than the fact we might work some kind of an easement on the back gate, because they need a little more property to put their access in. Uh, you're proposing of taking five feet off of my property for their development. That's, that's one issue. And then we're looking at a safety issue as well. Morris is a one-way street, and people dropping their kids off and picking them up, park on both, both sides of the street, leaving a very narrow corridor as it is, for traffic to go through there. And we access our egress and ingress from the backside, because we don't want to, although we have access directly to Bullard, we feel it's safer for us to come in and out the back gate, because our property goes from Bullard all the way to Morris. If you were to force us to move our wall and put a sidewalk in there, you're going to narrow that corridor even more. So during school hours, when, uh, parents are dropping off, picking up your kids, you will not be able to get a car, because they park on both sides of the street. And as it is, it's difficult, and you will not be able to get a car, uh, coming down through that passageway. And secondly, I haven't seen it addressed, that if you want to take five feet off of my property, and move my wall back five feet, and put a sidewalk in there, are you also going to take five feet off my neighbor on the other side, and extend that sidewalk all the way down to Forkner? Okay, those are my issues, and I appreciate your concern.
Anybody else need me to call them up? Do you want to come back up, Tim? Yeah.
We have some pictures here and things, if any of the council members would like to look at them, uh, from both sides, it's...
Yeah, if you, if you want to pass them through, we, we could take a look at them. All right, um, so council, I was going to talk about this item a little bit, I went out and visited the property, I drove by it yesterday, Robert, please, could you throw up a couple photos here? Um, here's, here's what I think's happening, there's a, very few open spaces of property left on Van Ness, in this area of town, and so we've, we've got one, we've got a guy that wants to do a project, he's actually going to put in a home right on Van Ness, and four additional homes on the backside of the property, there, it's going to be beautiful, by the way, as everything on Van Ness is, okay? So it's going to be fantastic. But the city has, um, following our plan and our code, and some traffic, um, concerns. The city is, um, suggesting that we put in some pieces... The city is suggesting that we put in some pieces of sidewalk and a bus stop that really don't fit the community. Okay? I'd hate to say that you almost have to be there to see it, but I'm going to have Robert pull up the map foot. Okay. Here's a tree. Let's start with this tree. This is a beautiful eucalyptus tree. They're up and down Van S. They make Van S very unique. That tree's got to come out. We're going to put in a strip of sidewalk. Now, I can, we can remove a tree for a real good reason. We've done it before. And sometimes there are very good reasons. This tree's got to go in, got to go out. So, a strip of sidewalk, maybe 200, 300 feet, can be installed on Bullard Avenue. The problem is, it doesn't connect to other sidewalks. So, we have a general plan that talks about connectivity using sidewalk. I can appreciate all of that. This is a piece of sidewalk that's a piece of sidewalk to nowhere. Okay? It's not going to connect. There's another residence there that's going to completely block that sidewalk off. It's not going to create the connectivity that our general plan's kind of calling for. So, in this case, this piece of sidewalk to nowhere is not really going to improve. As a matter of fact, it's going to take away, as kind of this gentleman said, the feel of the neighborhood. So, council colleagues, you know, we have a general plan. We have a development code. All these things are great. Sometimes when you go out into the real world and you try and implement them, they don't quite square with what we see in the community. The very first one came up in District 7 where, remember, you just, our concept didn't fit the neighborhood, right? So, Van S, you don't see sidewalk on Van S. And you don't see sidewalk right just adjacent to Van S on Bullard here. And there's also already currently a bus stop. But we don't need to put in a big fancy bus stop. There's already a bus stop there. So, here's what I want to do. I want to, in this case, get a variance to move that sidewalk off of this project. By the way, it's not just this tree. This is just the most predominant beautiful eucalyptus tree. Not if we put in sidewalk. Not if we, not if we put in the sidewalk to nowhere eliminates this tree. But it also eliminates dozens of other trees that are olive trees as well as oleanders. And so, it's really, doesn't quite fit the neighborhood. And that's my biggest concern. And I've walked it many times. The picture of the tree I took last night on my way home from an event. So, here's what I'm going to do. Everything apart from this with the, with planning is fine. Everything else is going great. So, I'm going to make a motion to accept this project with the following changes. Eliminate the sidewalk on Van S and Bullard. Eliminate sidewalk option on Van S and Bullard. Eliminate the bus stop on Bullard. By the way, that's not, we're not going to be losing a bus stop. There's already a bus stop on Van S. Right. Yeah. We're going to leave the wall and the trees intact along Bullard. And then I want to eliminate the sidewalk stretch that this gentleman was talking about along Morris on the backside of the project. And in exchange for some of that work, we're not letting, it's not like we're letting these folks off scot-free. I saw that there's an intersection on the back piece of this property that needs a lot of help. It's in bad shape. And I asked them, I said, "Can you guys help us fix that intersection?" Was never demanded. Yeah, if you want to pass that one by Tim as well. So, they agreed. They're going to fix that piece of intersection that they weren't even asked to do. I asked them to do it as kind of a working piece that I felt needed help. This whole thing, they're going to throw that in the deal and fix an intersection for us. So, the truth is, they're not trying to get out of anything. And I'm not trying to get them out of anything. I'm trying to say, we've got a, we've got a, now that we're finally going to do an infill project on Van S, I want it to be consistent with all the other homes and the feel of that street in my district. And so, that's my motion to make those changes. Okay. And I would like to say, I love sidewalk. Sidewalk's great. Doesn't fit right here. But I really appreciate what our city staff has done, helping me get sidewalk in Pinedale, where it really does complete a connection source and people can walk the complete community on a piece of sidewalk. So, that's my motion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
If I may, Council President.
City Manager.
I would like to call staff up to talk about the conditions that were placed on the project and just to walk you through that, if that's okay. Okay. Andy, do you mind?
Good morning, Andrew Benelli, Public Works Department. Just want to clarify, there was not a requirement to do any work on Van S with this project. The cross-section, Van S is a scenic road within the city and has different cross-sections. What's required there is a trail. It's already built. It's on the west side of Van S. So, this project wasn't conditioned to do any work on Van S at all. All of the work was, is on Bullard. And the conditions, and this follows our municipal code, is to install a sidewalk on Bullard and a bus bay. There's nothing in the conditions that address that particular tree or removal of the trees, but certainly those oleanders would have to be removed to put in sidewalks. So, that's really the conditions. And the wall, the wall, there's a, the current conditions read to install the sidewalk and landscaping, similar to what you would see in the newer parts of town, where you'd have a, the sidewalk is a, has a planter strip in that area, specifies a planter. And then there's landscaping behind that also that is called for. So, the wall would have to be removed. There would be maybe the existing trees or new trees, landscaping between the sidewalk and the wall.
And Andrew, in order to move that wall, on the other side of that wall are dozens of mature olive trees that help make this part of town beautiful and tie in with the vegetation that is in the whole neighborhood, not just on Van S. So, I'm very concerned about the whole process of moving that wall. Now, I might be, I might have been open to capitulating on this whole deal if this sidewalk was truly going to connect to something. But just east of this property is Mr. Schmidt Camp's property, and he runs the same oleander and adult vegetation on his property. And I don't think we're going to be able to punch through that property with sidewalk. So, I, it's very, this, you know, the idea is, from a planning perspective, it's accurate. And Andrew and I had a conversation, and I think Andrew's done a great job. This is what his job is called to do. He's following our codes, okay? But in this instance, Andrew, I just don't think moving that wall and forcing the removal of all those olive trees and to put in a piece of sidewalk that's not truly going to connect to the rest of the community. So, that's where I'm at on that. I didn't mean to cut you off, Andrew. Was there more?
There's not more. Be happy to answer any questions about the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you finished? Member Brandau? Okay. And I understand what you're talking about, preserving the integrity of the neighborhood because in the 7th District, which I represent, we also have Van S, Christmas Tree Lane, and some associated streets and neighborhoods. And when I began campaigning for this office, almost, what, eight long years ago, I started to walk these neighborhoods. More than one person I knocked on their door said, "If you try to put in a curb, gutter, or a sidewalk, we will take you out of office." They're very, very protective of their mature trees, and they like that county feel. And so, that's why I seconded your motion because I sympathize. Representing a similar constituency, I can tell you that people just want their neighborhoods to be left with that rural feel, and it's very special to them. So, I'm happy to support your motion. With that, the screen is clear. Let's go ahead. Do you want to, can you read the motion again, please, just for clarification?
Yeah. Make a motion to accept staff's recommendation with these changes. Eliminate the sidewalk. Andrew's right. I think I didn't mean to insult, but there's no sidewalk planned on Van S. I said Van S and Bullard. I really meant Bullard. But eliminate a planned bus stop on Bullard. There's already one on Van S. Leave the wall that we just discussed intact so that the olive trees on the other side of that wall remain intact. Eliminate the sidewalk in the backside of the project. That's what this gentleman had talked about. I wish I could properly show you what happened, what would be happening on that little street called Morris. It's completely, most people probably never travel Morris in their lifetime, but we're going to make some great improvements on Morris and the intersection back there. But we don't need, there's another piece of sidewalk back there that's not going to actually connect to anything. So, we want to eliminate that. And then I've added the requirement of them repaving the intersection at Sequoia and Morris. And that's my motion.
Okay. Thank you. And the screen is clear. We'll go ahead and vote. Is there any opposition to the motion? None at all. The item carries unanimously. Thank you, city staff. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Okay. It's now 10:19. What I want to do is, is Mr. Bills here? James Bills? Are you Mr. James Bills? No, I know. Mr. Bills, are you here? Okay. You're not here. Our next appearance by Mary Esther Correa to discuss a code enforcement fine. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. And we need to maintain quorum, council members.
I wish you guys would stay, not take, go off because this involves a lot of people. My name is Mary Esther Correa. I live at 3407 East Iowa, and I'm a long, I was born and raised here. And this is my second home, and I spend a lot of time here. I have two, two built, two built, no, a duplex. I live in one, and I rent the other one. But there's so many, there's, I think, 40 over, 40,000 homeless around the city, and they're scammers, they're thieves, they break in my house, they steal everything that I own, even the fixtures. Even, they even took the, those little, in the kitchen that you have, that have the lights on there, they stole those. Well, I'm sick and tired of it. But I decided, to add insult to injury, not only did I come, even though I was ill and over here, over 2,000 miles, but I got everything fixed. I always do that because this is my home, and I'm proud of where I live, in my district. But I don't have any support from our, the council member in District 7. And now I decided to stay here for a while, advocate to get more people involved and get registered to vote because we got to get some of you out of here because you're not, you're in here for our district to help us, help us, especially Hispanics in our District 7, and nothing's happening. I got fined $13,500, and I did everything I was supposed to do. I live here. I love Fresno because I was born and raised here. My, most of my whole family is here. But now I'm going to stay here, register, and register other people to get some of you guys that are bumped in the logs and don't do nothing. Just, you're forgetting that we, the taxpayers, pay your salaries, and you do nothing for us, nothing for us. So, now I'm going to advocate to, I know this is your last, but you're going to run for Senate, and I'm going to go against you. I'm going to vote against you. Get all my friends and everybody, my family, to vote against you because you're not, you're not the person to advocate for the people, for yourself. Okay? Now, to add insult to injury, I fixed everything. The code inspector, you can't lump all of us that own properties as slum landlords. I agree that there are some, and they should be fined. I am not one of those. And there are a lot of people that we own property, and we get fined for nothing. This is crazy. This is, this is thieving, and this is scamming. And I'm a senior citizen that I worked all my life, and I'm disabled, and you're still thieving and scamming. I'm going to write to the, I've already written to all, my senators and everybody in Congress, and I'm going to write, and I'm writing here to, this is crazy. Filing me $13,500 when I did everything I was supposed to do? This is outrageous. But I, good, because now I'm going to pay you $10 a month.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Fine. You heard me. You advocate for the, you do not advocate for the property.
Thank you for your comments. Bye-bye. All right. Let's have Felice Miss Lang, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, please. And then you also have three minutes. Just know that during public comment, council members are welcome but not compelled to answer any questions that folks might have, just so you know, in case you ask a question and nobody says anything. So, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Okay. My name is Felice Coke Miss Lang. I was born August 28, 1980. My nickname is Coco, and I'm the guy all over media, Coco, the, what all the presidents are talking about. And my question is, is how come City Hall didn't protect my mental capability of thinking properly and outputting information and the way I want to and having you guys accept the information and selling my barcodes that were illegal, that everybody's saying it's on black market, even though you guys think it's legal because it's on paper? But I want to know why is all my inventions that I'll put it through my brain and lyrics are, have different credits and different copyrights through different companies?
I don't know. I'm unable to answer your question. I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay. I'll give you some time to figure it out, and I'll be back in next City Hall meeting sometime.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you. Michael? You want to come on up?
This is for unscheduled communication, right?
Yes. Unscheduled. Give us your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes as well. Thank you.
Michael Green, 710 Van S, Suite 220. I love public service. Actually, the hearing on the cultivation ordinance was interesting because we were talking about a ban that wasn't a ban. And then the ban actually came up before the Planning Commission last night, and it's going to come back to you. They voted 401 to approve. But I just wanted to share that some of the confusion with cultivation ordinance and the ban, and a lot of the messaging is mixed. And I think part of that is the reason the original bill was brought forward as a package. So, you had the cultivation ordinance slash ban, and then you had the adult use ban or the just recreational ban. So, the talking points got kind of meshed together at that point. Something that was interesting on the resolution last night, though, was although on June 22, the council's direction seemed fairly clear, at least the council majority said, "We're just going to, if it's adult use, we're going to ban it." When it came to the Planning Commission last night, there was a little tweak to it that said, "We're absolutely going to ban everything recreational except testing labs." And it's like, I didn't quite remember that coming out on the June 22 meeting. And so, I asked to get an explanation from staff. I didn't get one. I have checked around since then to say what's going on with this, and I've heard some interesting gossip. But I just wanted to kind of highlight the idea that as we cautiously move forward toward cannabis regulation, if that's actually what's happening here in the city of Fresno, transparency is very important, and the issues are complicated. And so, what we're doing up in Lake County, what we've seen in the city of Clear Lake, in the city of Lakeport, where I serve as a planning commissioner, is we tend to bifurcate these issues, and we tend to find a lot of success on that. Personal cultivation is one thing. The things Councilmember Bretafell was talking about, there's a rich history of cultivation ordinances around the state. If you just ask DARM to go out there and say, "What's the average of personal cultivation," you could get a pretty quick answer on that because most other communities have addressed that issue a long time ago. On the issue of commercial regulation, whether it's a rec ban, a medical ban, whatever you're doing on that, all that stuff is very complicated. And that's where the consultants would provide some value. And that's where a citizens advisory group would provide a lot of value. And what we've seen in these other communities that are moving for regulation is, you guys know how the industry works. There are a lot of people out there who are very familiar with how the industry works. You need their help, and you also need input from your own citizens to plow through these rather complicated issues. So, my only suggestion moving forward is if you can continue to bifurcate your personal cultivation, which is very important, your commercial stuff, which is much more complicated, and along the way, if you can remember that medical and adult use... and along the way, if you can remember that medical and adult use needs and regulations are somewhat different, too, I think that's going to help you moving forward. Personal cultivation is one thing, all the commercial stuff is, is different, and I just think, whatever you're going to do, I know the messaging is very mixed, just based on what I've heard here today, but I think you could do a lot better for your citizens in terms of transparency, on whatever, whatever you're going to bring back on the rec ban, and that's just about it.
Thanks. Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, as always. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on any item that is, is or is not contained on today's agenda? Please come forward. Dottie, what are you here for? Not here for any particular item? Okay, I wanted to make sure that we take care of you today. Dottie is actually our chairperson of our Senior Citizens Task Force, former elected official with the Community College Trustees, and now chairing that committee as well, so wanted to give her a shout out. Thank you for being here today, Dottie. Okay, so that, that does it for the 10 o'clock and the 10:05. Did James Bills ever come? Okay, James is not here. The 10:30 item has been removed and rescheduled, and that means that we can go on to general administration, actions pertaining to northbound 41, Public Works.
Good morning, I'm Mike Holly, Public Works, Capital Management Vision. The item before you is State Route 41, northbound off-ramp improvements at Shaw. This project is located within Council District Four, and the scope of work includes the widening of the off-ramp to provide dual left and right turn lanes, and an upgrade of existing curbs to meet ADA standards. The two actions on this item are to adopt a finding of categorical exemption per staff determination, and award a construction contract in the amount of six hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars to Avacyn Construction. Five sealed bid proposals were received and opened in a public bid opening on June 13, 2017, the bids ranging from six hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight to eight hundred and four thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. Avacyn Construction was deemed the lowest in responsible bidder, excuse me, the lowest responsible bidder. Staff is recommending award of construction contract to Avacyn Construction in the amount of six hundred and fifty, six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars to construct improvements to the northbound off-ramp there at Shaw, and authorize the public director who is designated to sign and execute a standardized contract on behalf of the city of Fresno. That concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer questions if any, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to council. This one is, says Council District Four, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Second by Member Brandow. The screen is clear, is there any opposition to this item? Passes unanimously. Thank you, staff. Move now to item 3B, actions pertaining to the northeast surface water treatment facility. This is located in Council District Six, and we turn it over to Department of Public Utilities, there you are.
Morning, Council. Mike Carvajal, Department of Public Utilities. Approval of the supplemented, supplemental mitigated negative declaration, safe drinking water, SRF financing resolutions, and Tenth Amendment to the annual appropriation resolution will support the construction of a six million gallon finished water reservoir at the northeast surface water treatment facility. This facility presently operates with a one and a half million gallon reservoir, which is undersized for its current thirty million gallon a day capacity. Surface water treatment facilities typically operate with a minimum of ten percent of their daily capacity and storage, and the existing tank was downsized during value engineering efforts to reduce the overall cost of the original construction of that facility. A six million gallon reservoir will provide greater operational flexibility, reduce unanticipated shutdowns, provide adequate fire flows, and greater flexibility to address changes in water quality. The state has offered to fund the reservoir through an SRF low interest loan, and approval of the environmental findings and funding resolutions will enable the state funding to be finalized. Estimated cost of the project is fourteen million dollars. I'll be available to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, let's go ahead and go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and return it to, we have a motion to approve, and a second by Member Soria. All those in, whoops, yeah, go ahead.
Mike, so what, what kind of a timeframe are we looking for? When could this be?
When will construction occur?
Yeah, complete?
Complete, we are looking at, right now, we are pushing toward, trying to get it online by the peak pumping season next year. We currently have design bid proposals that we are evaluating, working with City Attorney's Office, as well as the Purchasing Division, to evaluate those proposals, and we expect to bring you a design build recommendation to award a contract in the next month.
So we, by next year's water allotment, we'd, we'd be, we'd be up and running?
Well, the plant is, is running.
No, the plant's running, I get it, this addition, yeah.
Right, this addition would just, you know, be an operational improvement to that facility, improve its operation, provide the additional storage, and so ideally, yeah, sometime during, during that peak pumping season next year, we would like to have this tank online.
Cool, thank you.
All right, the screen is clear, there is a motion and a second, is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the item carries unanimously. Thank you, staff. Yes? Oh, yeah. No, it's okay. It's, certainly, it's been removed from the agenda, but we'll be back on August 24th, and do we have a time yet, Member Bretafell? At 10:30? I'm sorry for that confusion, thanks for coming today. We move now to item 4A, this is a bill for introduction, amending subsection of relating to the prohibited use of streets. Member Brandow, we'll turn it over to you. Item 4A of City Council.
Okay, so this is actually kind of a cleanup item, and I don't, is Dell in the room? Dell, Dell, come on forward and give us the specifics. This is a cleanup item to a trailer issue, truck and trailer issue, that we all passed at council a couple of months ago, and we found out when we went to implement some of, some of it, that we had a little hitch, and so Dell, could you explain that?
Trailer hitch?
Yeah, trailer hitch, yeah, yeah.
I, I was hoping to comment on that, you stole my thunder. Dell Estherig, Parking Services Department. What we found is, with any new ordinance that we take on, is you always have people to play the game, and in a couple of council districts, we have found where we say it's attached or it's not attached, they attach them at night, and then, you know, people complain, and they unattach them, and we have a couple that, for no fault of anybody's, but just the way they're registered through the DMV, they can get around the ordinance. All this ordinance does is says that it can be attached or unattached, and it still falls under ordinance, thereby we can enforce it. It's pretty simple.
Thanks, Dell. So, tiny little cleanup item.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, are you going to go out to the public? Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion and a second, thank you. I will go out to the public, are there any members of the public who wish to address the City Council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll return to council. There is a motion and a second, the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We move now to item 4B. We move now to item 4B, opposing Senate Bill 35, City Councilmember Brandow.
All right. Not too long ago, I get a, I get an update from the League of Cities in my mailbox, and...
Bye. Go ahead, Member Brandow.
So, a couple weeks ago, I got an update from the League of Cities in my mailbox, and they were talking about Senate Bill 55, it's a bill currently working its way through Sacramento that they oppose, okay? And so I got really interested in it, and for me, looking into the issue, there's some debate on merits of the issue, but I have a problem, because in general, this issue removes local control over land use issues, and takes that control into Sacramento, okay? So for me, my view of government is that the entity closest to the people, in this case, city government, should be making many of these decisions, okay? So I'm opposing, and I'm proposing, I'm making amendment to pass this resolution of opposition to Senate Bill 55, because in my opinion, it does the following things, it removes control over land use issues from local control, the city of Fresno, to the Sac, to Sacramento, and although some aspects of the law, I don't even need to debate, and some aspects are fine, but in reality, and some would say it's not targeted for the city of Fresno, and I could agree with parts of that, but in general, I'm just opposed to removing local control over our community. And then, what it really does is it's trying to get around dealing with, just right here, a few moments ago, on the Van S and Bullard thing, we changed what our city was doing based on what the residents in that neighborhood want, okay? Three weeks ago, I had residents that wanted something that I disagreed with, but that control stays here. If we go down this path of giving our control over land use issues to Sacramento, before long, we're not going to have any say, and especially our neighbors are not going to have any say. They, on SB 55, they talk a lot about NIMBYism, and they want, they claim that NIMBYism is stopping affordable housing in the state of California. And NIMBYism is a very negative thing, when somebody says, I want to put a nuclear facility in your backyard, the neighbors say, not in my backyard, you're not. And I'm, and I'm fine with that, there's a, there's a time and a place for that, but I don't think NIMBYism is, is when residents express concerns about decisions they have no say in, okay? And this is trying to get around the concerns of citizens to attack a problem, which I agree, needs a solution. We need more affordable housing in the state of California, need to work on it, but the way to work on it is not to come into a community like Fresno and say, we're going to do it in your community, and your residents have no say, and therefore, if your residents have no say, your council members have no say. And so I'm opposing Senate Bill 35 for those reasons.
Thank you, Councilmember Brandow. Let's go ahead and go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Greg Trzakas, with the California Apartment Association, my business address is 516 West Shaw in the city of Fresno. First, let me point out, the public comment is a very tough act to follow today, so I'm going to do my best. I'm here on behalf of the association that supports SB 35. Councilmember Brandow, there are some concerns that you raise that are very valid. Our concern holistically statewide is that there are a number of areas in the state, not Fresno, but the Bay Area and parts of Southern California, where development, both market rate and affordable, has basically grown to a standstill because of NIMBYism. Everyone agrees that we are massively underhoused in the state of California, and that is in large part causing higher housing prices and higher, higher rent prices, which we, as an association, want to address. But the problem is, is that everyone wants to go to heaven, but no one wants to die, that there are ways in which the law can be used to keep development from happening, and all this does is essentially allow a developer at their own volition, who says, I'm willing to live and abide by the rules that SB 35 promulgates, in order to get my project fast-tracked. And so for them, they basically have to sit down and see, does this pencil out? Does it make sense for me to do this? And if it does, how much money will it save by getting something built now rather than later? There's an example in Sunnyvale of a developer who's trying to build a hundred and sixty units on an abandoned former trailer home park, that is TOD, less than three quarters of a mile from transit, right by the new Google facility. They are willing to pay prevailing wage, they are willing to have some of the units be affordable, and it's taken them four years to get the process approved, and the whole purpose of Senator Weiner, who's from San Francisco, his bill, SB 35, is to help expedite the people that want to play by these rules, and to get the project built more quickly, because we need more housing. With that, I'll happy to answer the questions the council may have.
Thank you. Oh, please.
So, and really, I had a conversation with Greg, and Greg, you also have great points, and this is what I was talking about, there are components of this thing that I think are essentially, they're trying to solve a problem, right, that Greg has illustrated. So I agree with problem solving, okay? But my bigger concern is giving away local control, and here's what I see happening, for better, for worse, they're trying to sweeten the pot, Sacramento, not Greg, I'm not talking about Greg right now, and if you want to sit down, because I'm not actually... But one thing Sacramento's trying to do is sweeten the pot for developers, so that they buy in to these procedures. Developers also, many times, don't want to have to talk to the neighbors in an, in an area, and I wish Mayor Swerengen was here, she'd go, oh my gosh, Brandow's disagreeing with developers, okay? But, you know, trying, in Sacramento, they're trying to sweeten the pot so the developer community buys in, because there's bonuses for them, there's benefits for going with these programs to developers at times, right? And in, in many ways, in my opinion, they're simply trying to woo developers away from local control, and I, I just believe, and I, I was asked yesterday, do I think it's just a slippery slope? And the answer's yeah, I believe it's partially a slippery slope, and I don't want to wake up one day and have our residents have not much input, or zero input, and also this body to have not much or little input in these decisions. So that's my concern, but Greg, on the, on some of the issues, the components of this particular bill, you and I would agree all day long, I just have a problem with the, what's, what I see happening.
No, I understand your concern, Councilmember, I would also point out that, you know, the process begun by our previous mayor with Business Finley Fresno, with this council, with Mayor Brand, with Director Clark at DARM, the issues that my colleagues face in the Bay Area and Southern California, we fortunately don't face, and so a lot of it here really isn't applicable to Fresno, per se, but it's more the idea that we hear from our members, especially the large corporate members that are trying to build, you know, three, four-hundred unit complexes, and willing, again, to play by these rules, that are spending way more time and money than is necessary to get these units built. I, I can't speak for the single-family home builders, but when it comes to multifamily, we all know that we need more housing, and if we can expedite the process, we feel that'll get this housing online more quickly, which will ideally drive down cost, which is beneficial to everyone.
Thanks. Okay, and with that, we will, have we gone out to the public? No?
Yeah.
We already have, okay. Oh, right, you were the, I didn't know if you, I couldn't remember if you were part of his presentation or not, okay. So public comment is closed, and there are a couple council members punched up, let's go to Member Soria.
I just wanted to ask the administration, see if our department has taken a look at this. I know that in the last round of updating our development code and kind of the overhaul, I think this council, or this body, supported by right development to try to streamline a lot of this, so to some degree, we are already doing, I guess, or are within that spirit of trying to streamline to help address some of the challenges with time, and some of the challenges that we faced here in the past. So I'm just curious to see, are you guys taking a deeper look into this? I'd like to, I guess, have our experts, you know, the ones that have to deal with these issues and the permits and so forth, maybe chime in, so that this body can actually accurately represent what, you know, what the needs of Fresno are, when saying we support or oppose a state legislative proposal.
So we, we have been researching this issue, but we have not taken a formal stance
And I think for purpose, I will just say, for purposes of where I stand on this proposal, I think that always, it is important to have...
I think that always, it is important to have community support, but we do have the balance in terms of the needs for building housing. At this point, I'm not gonna be able to take, you know, to support your opposition, I'd like to kinda continue talking to folks, hear from the department, to see if we can get a better sense of where, how Fresno will be impacted with this, before I take an official position. I see in terms of, if you look at the list of support and opposition, it's kind of all over the map. It is a legislative proposal that is supported with bipartisanship, I think even Senator Andy Vidaq is a co-sponsor of it. So I'd like to just kind of see, over the course of the next few weeks, I believe that the legislature right now is in recess, so there is time to come back, and if the administration wants to kind of give us their input over the next few weeks, I'd consider then taking a position at a later time. Thank you.
Member Bretafell?
I looked into this issue, spoke to Greg and Councilmember Brandow. I understand what they're trying to do on the state level, but I'm gonna support Councilmember Brandow, because I do wanna maintain as much local control as we can. If something came in District Six, I think the people wanna have a voice, and that's why we're here, to represent them, and so I don't wanna do anything that affects that. So I will support your motion today.
Okay, the screen is clear, I just have a couple of remarks to make. Member Brandow, I respect what you're doing, I respect you, I agree with you on this issue. However, I have a personal policy, just personally, against taking pieces of legislation that are winding their way through the state legislature, and weighing in on them, just because I think that it, for a variety of reasons that I don't even have to get into, so I'm gonna be casting a friendly abstain today. So with that, we'll go ahead and, let's vote electronically, please. So would say yes to a vote. Yes is to support, Member Brandow, two votes. Yeah, yes, okay, got it. There are three abstentions and two yes votes. Thank you, council. Move now to, I guess that's it for, except for closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, in closed session, we have litigation, the Aguirre case versus city of Fresno. I would not expect any announcement afterwards.
All right, thank you. You folks that just came in, what, what item are you here for, or can I help you?